It is eleven minutes past seven, and at this point I would call the May meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a short agenda tonight, but we actually have a presentation which we'll get to in a few moments. But at this point I entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to address the board on agenda items only.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. I don't know if you've gotten a chance to look at the agenda or not, there are two items on there. Davey, wouldn't they?
Nothing?
Okay. If there are no comments, a motion to return to regular business.
Give you a break, boy.
Motion's been made by Trustee Israti. In second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Griffith. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. Thank you. A village clerk's report. Clerk Nella?
The clerk's office sold 449 trust tags this month. We had, we attended one planning board workshop and meeting, and there were two payrolls. We also have enough coming holiday where the offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th, in observance of the memorial.
Okay. And we haven't decided yet whether or not we are going to summer hours. We hope to have an announcement in the next couple of weeks as to whether or not the clerk's office will be going to summer hours like we did last year. You've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the April board meeting. At this point I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider and seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any discussion?
It's nice to see so many members of the public listed there.
Yeah. It was a full house. There are no comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. There is an upcoming event. The Harris Smith American Legion Post will be hosting their annual Memorial Day celebration services on Memorial Day, 10 o'clock, at the Red Church Cemetery. And yours truly has been asked to be the guest speaker, but that is Monday, 10 o'clock, up at the Red Church Cemetery. Treasure report. Clerk Nella?
In the general fund, we spent $21,096.23. In the water fund, we spent $4,006.43. And in the sewer fund, we were at $1,993.2 for a total of $27,964.68.
Thank you very much. At this point I entertain a motion to approve the treasure report.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Just a reminder that each month we publish the treasure report on our village webpage so residents can get an opportunity to see where every dollar is being spent. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. The next item is the actual payment of the bills based on that treasure report and the invoices that the trustees have signed. At this point I entertain a motion to approve payment of the bills for this month.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor and seconded in a whisper by Trustee Schneider. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. Trustee Israti, do you have a zoning report?
The zoning officer went on vacation on Wednesday, so I didn't have a chance to speak to him on Tuesday. And last week, he noted that the garbage can issue has, is improving. He's been watching on that. We also talked about a couple of big buildings.
Yeah.
And that is sort of an ongoing issue, but the resolution of that is not laid out very well at this stage. The, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. I don't believe there are any correspondence except for a letter from Judge Clark that's in your books. Do you have a copy of Judge's letter?
Yes.
Okay. We'll address that later on. Before we move into regular business, about six months ago, Roy Monchine reached out to me about having a Bard College liaison, someone that would be able to work with the Village of Tivoli as well as the Village of Red Hook. I don't believe the town of Red Hook is on board with this. I believe it's just the two villages. And we, over the last six months, in concert with Rory and some of the administrators of our college and also George Harar, we have tweaked this a little bit. And we have decided to name this Bard College Liaison to the Mayor's Advisory Cabinet that I announced at, that I announced at the rework. I said, in a press release that went out, that I was proud to see the relationship between the college and the village improving, and I greatly think that having a liaison that would work specifically with the village could be a benefit. But I don't want to take up your time, so I'm gonna ask Rory to step forward, and you can come up and address the board, and you're gonna be on camera. So probably you want to stand over here so Panda can capture you, so. What is your major at Bard?
I'm a political studies major with a concentration in social policy. So, good evening, guys. My name is Rory Monchine. I'm a senior at Bard College, and it's truly an honor to be able to address you all today. For the past six months, I've been working with Mayor Cranna to establish the Bard Student Liaison Program, which basically takes three Bard students, two off-campus, including one from Red Hook and one from Tivoli, and one on-campus student to serve on the local village governments. And the goal of it is to facilitate active dialogue between Bard College and the village governments. So, I developed this program in response to the shuttle incident of 2012, which I think we're all pretty familiar with. Bard students were having a lot of different issues in the villages, and the shuttles obviously got canceled. And a lot of Bard students were really upset about it. And the reason why they were so upset about it was because, was because they didn't really feel like their voices were being heard. A lot of the Bard administrators were saying the shuttle needed to be canceled because nothing good can come after 12:00 PM. But unfortunately, the decision did not actually include a lot of Bard students' voices. So I noticed that there was a lot of different disconnects between Bard College and the village governments. So I started to think to myself, what can we do to improve government transparency and give Bard students the voice that they want to have? Now, a lot of people at Bard College know that there's a village government. That's not even a question. But a lot of them are afraid to approach the village government. So, I started to think about what we can do to make Bard students feel comfortable and make Bard students feel like Tivoli is their home. Tivoli is their home. They obviously run houses here. They live here. They should have a voice in the village governments. But they don't feel like that. So there needs to be some way to bridge that connection a little bit better. So, in response, I developed the Bard Student Liaison Initiative. And luckily for us, we just passed this into the Bard Constitution, so if you'd like, I could read it out loud as to what exactly it is.
Or give us bullets, whatever's easier.
Yeah. It's in bullets anyway.
Okay.
It's all good. Okay. So, the Bard Student Liaison serves the official bridge between Bard, Tivoli, and Red Hook. Their power shall derive from Bard students through an official election for each position. Off-campus liaisons vote in a separate election from the on-campus liaisons. So the off-campus liaisons obviously work under the auspices of the mayors. In Tivoli, they work under the auspices of Mayor Cranna. In Red Hook, they work under the auspices of Mayor Blandell. We've been working on this as an experiment for the past year, and so it's been working out pretty well. So, basically, they announce their candidacies, they work with the Center for Civic Engagement to prove they're responsible, and then they continue. They work with the mayor and they meet once a month to discuss issues. And in Tivoli, they actually serve under the mayor's cabinet. So, it doesn't necessarily replace the board, but what it does is it gives students the voice that they need to be a part of it. So, I can go into what each of the roles are, because each role is very different. So, what the on-campus student does is they live on campus and they make changes on campus in response to what goes on in Tivoli. So they talk about what could be improved on campus, like, for example, the shuttles. How can we make sure that those changes are facilitated on campus? And how can we make sure that there's a better connection? So, we have that. But, for your purposes, I'm gonna focus on what Tivoli, what the Tivoli Liaison does. So, what they do is they must live off-campus during the academic year in which they serve. So, next year, the Tivoli Liaison will have to live in Tivoli. They have to work on behalf of all off-campus students and communicate their needs to the mayor's cabinet. So basically, they go to the mayor's cabinet meetings, which I believe is once a month, and they talk to the mayor's cabinet about what Bard students, how Bard students feel in the community and help them circulate information. Because what I think is, is that Bard students don't necessarily know what's going on. It's not the fault of anybody here. It's just that sometimes it's really hard to reach Bard students, and the best way to do it is through word of mouth. So, if we get a conversation going, then I think that that would be much more productive. So, what they also do is that they're responsible for serving as a student representative at local meetings, so they will be coming to these village board meetings. Ideally, they will be able to speak a little bit and to get more acclimated to the community and understand how the village government works. I think that it's important for Bard students to know how the government works in order to be a part of it. What they also do is they encourage active engagement with the village and their events. So, they circulate events to on-campus students and they help, they help facilitate research apprenticeships, which I think are very important, to help them get more involved in the community. Then what they do is they talk about these types of things with the Center for Civic Engagement, the Central Committee, the Educational Policies Committee, and the Student Life Committee. So what we're gonna try and do is we're gonna try and give Bard students research apprenticeships, like what I'm doing right now with Mayor Cranna. It's two credits, and they can definitely work on developing that. What they also do is they help the local areas develop projects and they connect Bard students to different opportunities. They also hold meetings with other off-campus students, like meet and greets, at least once a month, and they help give a positive image with which to associate with college, and I think that's very important. When the shuttles got canceled, I admit, I wasn't really that effective, because I don't party, I don't believe in any of that stuff, but I didn't like being associated with the image that they had of Bard College. And I think that it's about time that Bard students start to take responsibility for themselves. I think that you need to have a face to what these students are. I think that you need to actually talk to the students themselves, as opposed to talking with the administrators, because the best way to resolve a problem is to include all parties. Now, before I get more into this and take any questions, I want to establish what the program is not. This program is not necessarily a forum for all village residents to vent their frustrations to Bard, to this liaison, because that's not fair on that one student. But what it does do is what, is it bridges that connection. It brings Bard into the mayor's cabinet. If you have any questions about what the liaison is doing, I encourage you to go to the mayor's cabinet. But, what it, but what it does is it's more like just trying to get the Bard students to feel comfortable with that, to, you know, to give them a sense that they are a part of this community and give them a physical representative. So, that's something that's also very important. It's not meant to replace the village government, like I said, it's just meant to give them a face. And I'm open to any other questions.
I just want to clear one thing. We didn't cancel, Bard didn't cancel the shuttles, we just changed the time of the shuttles from 2:40, I think, to 12 o'clock, so.
Oh, no, I was talking about 2012.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but I'm.
We're gonna replace them in Tivoli eventually.
Oh, okay, but, um, yeah. Do you have a question?
No, I just, I know you've worked very hard on this, and, you know, it's good that someone from Bard will be in the cabinet.
We want to make sure that, you know, we've, we've talked with Bard in the past about what Bard can do for us, but we also want to be able to help Bard as well with regards to providing internships, providing class credits to students who are at Bard College, whether they're volunteering on certain projects here, helping us do research or grant research, whatever the case may be. So, we want it to be a two-way street. So, we're, we're looking forward to this, and I think it's nice to have that cabinet representing the entire village. We've got folks from the riverfront, the development, North Road, Montgomery Street, we've got the development, the condos, we've got folks from all over, and it makes sense to have somebody from the Bard College community being represented, because we've got about 10, 12 percent. What do you think, Bard College students in the village?
I think it's a positive 20.
Is it? Living in the village of Tivoli, so it makes sense to have them be part of this, so. And I know how hard you've worked on this over the last six months, so we're looking forward to getting this off, up the ground. And George, you're graduating now, right?
Yes, sir.
Saturday?
Yes.
The both of you on Saturday, so congratulations to the both of you, but you're not leaving the area, though, right?
Thanks, no, we are.
Good.
George is a Tivoli native, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So you get to play two roles.
Yeah, it's great.
You're a joke.
Yeah.
And you mean. We're gonna be having elections in the fall to have the new permanent liaison. We've spoken about this with the Bard Student Government, and they're gonna be facilitating the elections in September, so it's very exciting.
Fantastic. Congratulations, you've done well on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rory, and thank you, George. Thank you very much. Moving on to our regular business, the first item on the agenda is authorizing a grant application to Dutchess County's Department of Planning and Development to fund the evaluation study of the potential transfer of ownership to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority of the Village of Tivoli's Water and Sewer System. This would be similar to the grant that the board approved, I think it was last year, for a feasibility study to determine whether or not it would benefit the Village of Tivoli to consolidate and/or share highway services with both the village and the town of Red Hook. We are looking at a $90,000, Councilor, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's a $90,000 grant application to the Department of Planning and Development. This $90,000 would fund the attorney, it would fund an engineering firm and any publications to inform the public about this. We expect the awards to be announced in late summer, but again, this would simply be a study, as we're doing right now. The engineering firm would make, would conduct the study and then present his or her findings to the Board of Trustees, and then the Board of Trustees would then make a determination as to whether or not we want to transfer ownership over. I would stress that this would only be done after public hearings and public forums, similar to what we're doing right now with the shared services with the town and village of Red Hook. And any engineer that comes in would know upfront that there is no predetermined conclusion, that we want simply a study for us to base a decision on. But, this came way through Dutchess County's Water and Wastewater Authority. They have done a recent joint study with the town of Hyde Park, and this would be a joint venture with the Water and Wastewater Authority. So at this point I entertain a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the grant application.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. The next appointment is, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of Trustee Bruno as Tivoli's Fair Housing Officer. By law, the village has to have a fair housing officer that could take complaints if someone feels that they are being discriminated against in a housing issue based on their race, sex, sexuality, religion, or disability. And I would like to appoint Robin Bruno, our trustee, to fill that seat. Previously, it had been the former Deputy Mayor Mike Lee, then myself, and at this point I'd like to appoint Trustee Bruno to fill that seat. So a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is authorizing the village of Tivoli government to utilize purchase orders to make any purchase for any department, whether it be the fire department, rescue squad, trustees, or DPW, clerk, and/or the courts. This is something that we've been talking about for a while, utilizing purchase orders. Any individual wishing to make a purchase would have to see upfront that those funds are available before the purchase can be made. This comes in concert with the village of Tivoli revamping its procurement policy, but we would like to get the purchase order system down as soon as we possibly can. So at this point I entertain a motion to approve utilizing of purchase orders?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconds. Is there any discussion?
I think this is a good tool that will hopefully help us keep the budget lines where they're supposed to be and prevent going over in some and having to make sort of painful modifications throughout the year, which is a great idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is establishing a public hearing for the purpose of hearing the public's comments on the proposed procurement policy, which we'll post online and we'll also post here in the village clerk's office. We'd like to establish the public hearing for June 18th at 7:00 here at the village hall.
And Mr. Mayor, you have a resolution in front of you for that, and it actually does include also a public hearing specifically regarding proposed Local Law Number Two, which would modify the existing procurement code provisions to remove the specific provisions of the procurement law from that law and instead provide for them to be adopted by resolution so that they can be more flexible and adjust from time to time and year to year. So, in addition to asking for permits on your specific procurement policy, just as a public hearing, the public hearing is on the amendment of the local law.
I apologize.
No, no, I just.
Thank you. You're right.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution.
Motion's been made by Trustee Israti. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries, and we'll make sure the clerk has the correct verbiage for the legal posting.
And could we reiterate the public hearing?
Yes, I apologize. The public hearing will be June 18th at 7:00 PM here at the village hall. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the annual lease agreement with the Tivoli Masana Call. The rate has changed from $1,200 to $1,300 a year. This is an annual housekeeping item. This is for the parking lot behind the Mason's Law, Mason's Hall, I'm sorry. At this point I entertain a motion to approve allowing me to sign the lease agreement?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by, seconded by Trustee Israti. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries.
My understanding is there will be some change in the language of the lease to clarify the terms.
Yes, and to, with more protection to the village of Tivoli as well. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approving the contract that I presented to you today. This is approving a contract to establish the law firm of Rodenhousen Shaw as the official attorney for the village of Tivoli. At this point I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Rodenhousen and Shaw?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion? There was never any doubt, Counselor.
This, this is because our esteemed counsel is separating from her former firm, Rottport Myers, and she's, has been focused on numerous, well, on this will enable her to keep that focus and continue to help us.
Reforming the firm, Rodenhousen Shaw.
Yeah. That's the best.
Absolutely. All in favor of the appointment of Rodenhousen Shaw?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is simply an update regarding the 9G work. Notice, we now have a flashing yellow and red light at the intersection of 9G and Broadway. This came after a lot of work and a lot of pressure by a lot of individuals. I want to thank my colleagues on the village board, the town supervisors, Sue Crane, County Legislature Mickey Struinski, County Executive Mark Molinaro, Senator Terry Gibson, Assemblyman Cahill. I also want to thank a former colleague of ours, Vince Manna, who many years ago circulated a petition that we submitted up to the New York State DOT to have attention drawn to this intersection. So, Vince, if you're watching, thank you very much for staying on top of that. And I also want to thank, and I say this at the state of the village, the thousands, and it's literally thousands of people that signed a petition to have a flashing light at that, at that intersection. Unfortunately, we saw far too many accidents at, at that intersection over the years, and it took a lot of pressure by a lot of individuals. This was not the act of one individual or one party. So I want to thank everybody, including this village board, for their voices in getting that intersection addressed.
Vince just didn't write that letter once. He wrote it about every six months, and he updated with fatalities and accidents and issues.
He was definitely on it consistently. Yeah, so Vince, we greatly thank you. So the light is now flashing red here and yellow on 9G. You also notice that they are paving parts of 9G. They're only paving the shoulders. There was some misunderstanding that the entire corridor would be repaved, and they're not, they're only paving the shoulders of 9G. However, we've spoken with Bard College, I'll ask you to talk when you present, but we've asked Bard College, and they've agreed, I believe, to improve some signage along 9G with some of the flags that you see as you drive through the campus. You see some of those flags on the poles that say Bard College, but we've talked about putting better signage up on 9G to let folks know that there is a college tucked off of 9G, and we need to do our part as well. I think we need to look at our sign on 9G and revamp that sign as well to let folks know that there is a village tucked off of, tucked off of this area, so. I also wanted to let the board know, I did not mention it in the workshop, I apologize. New York State DMB is now allowing village vehicles to have certain license plates that would have the village name on it, and EM for emergency management. In the event that there is a hurricane, a major snowstorm, if there's a major catastrophe or accident, this would allow those vehicles to get into access, supplies, fuel, whatever the case may be. So I've asked the superintendent if he wants one. We've decided to put one on the superintendent's car, and I believe we're going to put one on one of the fire trucks as well. It can't be the mayor's car, it can't be a village trustee's car, it has to be a vehicle that is owned and maintained by a municipality. And the state DOT looked at us, and they've decided that we can have two. It's based on your population, based on your fleet, and so on and so forth. So the DPW truck will definitely have one, and I've got to call into the chief to see if he wants one on his truck. He actually has a chief's truck, an official truck, so I don't know if he's gonna want one or not, but this EM will allow you certain access into certain areas. That is all that I have. I'll let you know the next workshop will be held June 11th at 6:00 in the mayor's office. The next regular board meeting will be held June 18th at 7:00, a workshop prior. And that is all I have at this point. So at this point I'm gonna turn it over to committee reports. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'll begin with the Water Systems Operational Report. We flushed all the water mains in the month of April, the 22nd, 24th, 29th, and May 1st. And the microbiological sample results show no violations. On April 26th, the beautiful Saturday when rain threatened but then did not come, we had a pretty successful cleanup day. And we had about 20 people trickle up to village hall, get some gloves. You did return your gloves eventually.
Yes.
You got those, thank you. The mayor was out there. It's great to see a lot of parents bringing their children, and I would like to thank our DPW for carting off everything that was gathered, and I particularly want to mention Daniel Mangieri and George Harar. George, who were some of those strapping young men with you who helped out?
Josh Witt, let's see, Mr.
Dave Mead?
Dave Mead, and Jordan Schoolmaker.
These gentlemen had a gang, half a dozen men who went down to the, all along the riverfront and did a lot of cleaning up down there. So it's always good to see some faces. I don't always see hang around village hall, come here and get involved, so that was our cleanup day on the 26th. Look for it next year. In fact, there was one gentleman who I have not seen in the village for an entire year. Since last year, he came with his little girl to this event, got some gloves, cleaned up a bag. I have not run into the guy all year, and then cleanup day, up he walked. It was really sweet. So I, I hope it's not that long till I see him again, but I just love that kind of participation. The community garden is um, absolutely full, I'm pleased to say, we have no more spots this year. Um, if you're interested in a spot for next year, you can contact TivoliCommunityGarden@gmail.com and um, there's, there are vegetables happening, flowers happening already. Um, and I want to um, thank in particular the green committee and our new um, garden coordinators who stepped up this year to, to run things over there. Uh, it's Danielle Ryu and Mara Ranville. Uh, I hope they have a great time and, and we can uh, twist their arms to keep doing it in subsequent seasons. Yeah, so this is uh, season three. We were able to uh, make raised beds in the back half of the garden, so no one can complain about a swampy plot this time. Um, and uh, we look forward to enjoying it all summer. And as the mayor mentioned, I have been uh, continuing to attend these uh, uh, safety forums that have been going on. Um, they've been uh, put together by legislator Struinski, county legislator. Uh, they have um, representatives from both villages, the town, um, our state assemblyman's office, state senator's office, uh, state DOT. Um, I guess we've been meeting now for about five months. Um, and even though uh, the agenda's sort of, it's organic, it, it reacts to what's happening and you know, first couple of months, it was very much uh, nine G safety. Um, and I just want to make clear that even though the, the light is up and the shoulder uh, reconstruction is happening, this, this committee's gonna continue to meet, so our focus is shifting away from um, nine G. Uh, let's not say we're not gonna continue to pay attention, but we're also looking at uh, trying to establish some trail systems in the area. Um, and we've had uh, some different um, sort of brainstorming about, you know, where could walking and cycling trails go in the area? How can we continue to showcase what we have here in, in this immediate corner of Dutchess County without having people have to walk on nine G, cycle on nine G? Um, and uh, Bard has done a lot, I know, to try and inform and educate their students about where they are, that this is a dangerous rural highway. Uh, personally, I have, I just last night saw a student walking with a flashlight, which is a lifelong resident. It was the first time I saw that, so that's a good thing. So um, those safety forums are gonna continue to meet monthly and uh, we'll have regular updates. That is all I have, thank you.
Great. Trustee Israti?
I don't have a whole lot to say. I will say that Robin Bruno did a wonderful job of presenting the, the skate park to the planning board and that process has moved forward. Um, I also wanted to comment that I am feeling a wonderful improvement in the relations with Bard. I had the privilege of um, participating in a class on sustainability that was um, led by Brent Kowalczek, head travel trustee of Red Hook. Um, and I sat through one day of presentations, they were absolutely fabulous. They were um, recommendations for bicycle trails, uh, for vertical gardens, for um, uh, uh, public art, which if any of you saw it out on Memorial Park in Red Hook, there was a display of five hundred balloons uh, for apple blossoms a day. Um, so the presence of Bard is really being felt increasingly and in wonderful ways in this community. And one that pertained mostly to Tivoli was a wonderful presentation on uh, putting a grocery store into Tivoli and the site that was picked was um, the Tivoli bookstore. Um, the um, the, the committee helped to facilitate uh, the young lady meeting, Trish Teager, and they're moving along together to come up with ideas for how uh, a grocery store might arrive in Tivoli. And I just feel like those kinds of initiatives are uh, a fabulous way to uh, promote our relationship with Bard College.
Thank you. Trustee Schneider?
Okay, well, let's start out with the numbers. So the charge volume summary report for the month of April, uh, charges received were ten. Excuse me, charges received were thirteen, charges disposed, uh, twenty-four. Uh, total of nine hundred and nine dollars was remitted to the controller. Um, other than that, uh, I wanted to touch very briefly on the shared services uh, study that is ongoing. It's already been uh, kicked off and um, the usual meeting, we have a monthly committee meeting, has been rescheduled, so I don't have a specific update uh, as to the status of that. We will be convening next Thursday as opposed to this morning. In regard to Business and Artists Association, I have begun dialogue with several of the local business owners and um, other um, gathering places, if you will, in the local community to start to explore different avenues that might bring additional visitors to Tivoli, how to uh, make the experience of Tivoli uh, better for those who are already visiting us. If you are a local business owner, please feel free to reach out to me if I haven't spoken to you yet. And if I haven't spoken to you yet, I will be reaching out to you to facilitate further discussions for that, so, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I've got.
Comments from the public?
On anything?
Sure.
We had talked about that crosswalk?
Yes.
Going over to, toward the park from this area, from the village hall, is that in a?
Yes, we're doing that.
In the future? Because I know summer's coming.
We're, it's actually soon. Um, the engineer did up a, uh, the plan for it, uh, for the, the crosswalk here and also uh, the intersection um, as well, to, to repave, uh, not repave, but rip out all those sinking bricks. So it would be a crosswalk here and over there. In addition, we're going to repaint the um, crosswalk over at the park itself, because it's faded. Uh, so we're doing the crosswalk right across from here and um, up at the intersection as well.
I just didn't know it was gonna be.
It's gonna be this year.
Done by the summer rec program or?
Probably, the crosswalk probably could be, yeah. Yeah, and the summer rec program, I don't know if you know or not, is now, um, the, the, the summer rec program and the village of Tivoli library are doing a program together. Uh, the hours will actually be extended and we're doing programs actually with the library so that children who are partaking over there in the summer rec program at the park itself would then be coming over as well here to the village library uh, to do programming uh, as well.
That's why you need the crosswalk.
That's why we need the crosswalk, right. Yeah, but it was a, it was a grant that the village library received and we did it as a, a, a support uh, letter to the library for them to receive that grant so that we could offer more services to children in the summer. That's all?
Can't imagine you're out here easy. Uh, the county highway between uh, Santa Fe and the bridge?
Yeah.
There's gonna be something done here.
Yeah, I spoke to the um, commissioner of highways, was today, Wednesday, I spoke to him Monday. They were up today, they were street sweeping that and they're coming up now to uh, to pave it. So they just did a sweep to clean it up and they're gonna come up and, and pave that whole area. They're gonna, uh, from what I understand, David, they're gonna pave from um, um, pretty much Santa Fe down to the bridge. Um, we're on a list, they put us on a list of compared to other, other roads. But uh, I had reached out two, three months ago maybe and asked about that. Um, we heard back from them and then we didn't hear back, so I asked the commissioner Monday morning, it was actually. So they're coming up, uh, today, they were here street sweeping, start cleaning up. It pleases me to believe the next step now, they've gotten a lot of the junk cleaned out of there. They should be up here uh, any day, I would assume.
The yellow zones or they gotta redo?
Yes, we actually talked about that last Wednesday. Um, we're repainting a lot of the yellow zones here in front uh, of the firehouse so that cars don't park there, so that, you know, the reason that's yellow, so that the trucks can make the swing to get in. And we're also looking so, in some other areas in the village as well.
It's bad there by Pharaoh Avenue, it just.
Yeah, every.
The trucks gate, I mean, those huge garbage trucks going down there, avenue are just ridiculous, but uh.
The uh, the holdup was actually waiting for the street sweeping, so now that that's happened.
Is, does Pharaoh have, I know it has one way on Montgomery Street, but on Broadway, is there a one-way sign, there's a lot of cars coming down there and that's dangerous.
I, yeah, didn't we just replace a sign on there?
We replaced the street sign, but I do not believe it has a one-way sign.
You know, we.
Where you go in, so.
We could paint the.
I'll put it on my sign list, yeah.
But you know what we could do is we could borrow, we borrowed them before, talk about shared services. We've actually borrowed stencils from the town of Red Hook School District. There's nothing stopping us saying that we couldn't paint the brand.
Yeah, or do both, I mean, certainly I would think a, a one-way sign on that street post would be.
Yeah.
A lot of cars coming on there, it's.
It's a one-way road.
Oh, yeah.
It is a one-way street, it's just.
Well, incidentally, we're doing a, trustee Bruno and I did an entire inventory of the village, every sign and we're sort of going through them and replacing what's missing, fixing what's broken. Uh, it'll be a nice long summer project, but uh, just added that one-way sign there for Pharaoh.
Good.
It's a good catch, Dave, thank you.
One last thing. You're increasing the assigned lodge to thirteen hundred dollars. We're gonna do anything about maybe enforcing uh, parking tickets or parking permits there?
Yes, we, there was a.
Do we need to recoup that?
There, not now, unfortunately, but there was a problem and we admit it and we knew it and we addressed it at the sheriff's office and it did get better towards the end of the winter season. Um, there was a problem with tickets not being issued. Uh, we addressed that and once we did address it, we did see uh, an increase in the tickets toward the end of the season.
Because even the lot, either behind the Panzer or behind the Marty Clark's building there, there's a lot of parking in there and there, probably more Bard students in there that live in the schoolhouse that should be parked behind the schoolhouse.
Yeah, and those lots are a little bit different, because we share, you know, with the buildings and, and, and the restaurants and so forth.
But that's permitted parking.
Sorry?
That's permitted parking.
Yeah, some of them are, Susan Kirk, Navara, but the entire lot is not permit, only certain uh, spots.
The blacktop part.
You got me on that one.
Okay. Yeah, but, yeah, I know what you're talking about, David, but there's a couple, we, I believe there's certain spots that we have and there's certain spots that Panzer has, um, I don't remember.
Well, they have their own parking on there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Their own parking.
You're talking about the schoolhouse, parking under the Mason's.
Permit parking, I think.
Permit parking, I think.
He's asking about the schoolhouse and the.
I think that's all permit parking.
Does that run along by the fence by our board?
Over there.
Right, there's a lot by the fence and then there's the main part.
Right. That lot is weird, strangely cut up.
The only places there, I think four or five places right behind uh, what used to be San Julia Salon, Salon which belonged to that building.
Right.
But the rest of them are.
Going straight back.
Going straight back are municipal places and require permits for over nine apart.
But we, we recognize that and we, we were seeing a delay, and a delay, we were seeing them not being issued. And we did raise that and, and also with regards to reports in the sheriff's office, I spoke with um, the sheriff's office last week about reports and they're going to be sending us monthly reports now, um, rather than just these. We're gonna get a detailed uh, monthly report so that we know. I mean, we're spending thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think, on police coverage, so we just want to be able to be able to show why, um, and I could be off on that fact, but I think I'm pretty close to that number, thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollars on policing.
The police, I haven't seen them lately.
I haven't seen them in a long time.
They've been here.
They're here. And, and I, you know, I've said, I mean, I'm sorry, but I've, I've said before, you may not see them, but they are here. Um, we, and I, without going into great detail, we do have uh, patrols on certain nights of the week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, every month is, I, you know, when I sign the invoice, I say, yeah, they've been here, because look at all that money, so.
But you're not always gonna see them.
As long as they're out there at the night, it's fine.
Is there any other business coming for the board? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and if there's no discussion, we're adjourned at seven fifty-two.